On the my cameras at home that the pavement was like, let's check the end. I got your like four, four hundreds. Everybody got six though.
We got four jobs.
We can smell it from here. Okay. Call the uh, we have the rounds of funding commission go order. Uh, I think we're supposed to start with the uh, plan.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unregret, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, so the only item on our agenda today is discussion on the 2024 preliminary budget. Uh, and then set approve the preliminary budget and then set a preliminary uh, or set a date and time for the budget hearing. So is everybody's eyes buggy with numbers, decimal points and commas? Yes. Um. Anybody come up with any brilliant ideas on cutting budgets, slicing budgets? I know uh, approving higher number is an okay thing um, because we have between now and the middle of September to cut it. It just is sometimes little sticker shock when people get their notice in first part of September uh, for their estimates. And these have to go out the end of August.
August thirty first is the last day.
Yep, so. And so Candy and Lisa with their magic get all the numbers from all the taxing entities, the school, the park, the city, whatever, wherever a person lives and sends those notices out and bada bing bada boom. But that is also a legislative timing, correct?
Yeah.
Probably work.
Right. So this is the grand total of all schemes and everything that's in the budget there? This?
That we take care of.
That we take care of.
And what was that last year?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. They give you a copy.
Fourteen six hundred three ninety five. So about a three million dollar increase. Just about a million dollar increase in highway, uh, like Kevin mentioned. Even number years, we always have a blacktop project. Um, our paving project, which will certainly add to that. All the disasters um, were combined into one. Now, those are monies that we have that were budgeted out and closed out. Is that correct?
Um, not all.
For all, right.
Yeah, yeah.
And a lot of the early one, you and I, and through like the thirteen.
We're gonna, that's something that Kevin and I are gonna work on so that it's done before the end of the year so that we basically what's the balance left is for um, the administration portion of it that the highway department did. So what we do is we take that money and we put it into this highway account to use towards other things. But we have to wait until FEMA closes a project to
Clear it off.
To clear it off, yeah. It's not a fast process.
Some other increases would be the uh, law enforcement center corrections that uh, budget going up by three hundred and fifty thousand. And then if you recall, our uh, state's attorney and our sheriff's department went up slightly on their budgets as well for increased um, enforcement and prosecution on those various things and um, yeah, just the overall cost of doing business. No, nobody, nobody likes it. But I think at the end of things, when we take a look at the final final, it was what a two point seven three, less than a three percent overall increase, so.
So the district health isn't there is all grants?
No.
Yeah.
Uh, counties put in so much um, they do to get state funding and grants, but um.
The only grants were for the state funding was
Oh, that's right.
Family planning, the tobacco.
The tobacco side of it is, yeah. Uh, yeah. Yeah, tobacco side is where they got uh, half red and a half red, what do you want, half and a half?
And the increase covered um, the library going from three point oh seven to four. Um, the airport from going to from three and a half to four. Um.
I think Matty had addressed the city of saying that um, they weren't gonna go with a full time, another full time person, they were gonna cut that person back to half time or a, a new person to half time and then that way save some money on not only salary but benefits as well. And then maybe work on capital improvements for the facility and so they may not need that entire whole thing, but we should what, what was discussed and discuss with her if there's avenues to save some dollars there.
When I look through this, um, I know Sheriff Lang talked about getting out of rotation of vehicles. How many, I don't remember the number, how many vehicles did they have to replace? What's that? But you were looking for three vehicles? I wondered if that was a question I'd ask.
Every other year it was an odd, an odd number.
I just wondered if some of these things went up, maybe that would be a consideration for two instead of three and then add a one next year. I don't know what kind of condition or vehicles are in or not a big deal, but still a number. By the way, I wondered, I had no idea what we've gone in the past, but this insurance thing seemed like it's out of control. I know it's the insurance, but it's still a hundred and some thousand higher than last year, wouldn't it, put into the let's see, what was that?
That's based off of claims.
Sorry, I understand.
Mm-hmm. Um, what is that was the email um, Andy Pertz or something, um, health insurance? Fifteen, fifteen point something?
I think it was more than that, it was, it was a big number, it was um, everybody's insurance went up and I think it's almost like on a yeah, two year, I know Andy Pertz for state, uh, you know, as they go through their biennium is is uh, you know, you get it for two years and always that second year is some big sticker shopping.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know if Blue Cross kind of follows suit with that or, you know, all political subdivisions going up, so there's years as well.
Right. But the year, so with, with Blue Cross, so the year following COVID? Was it, was it even five percent?
No, it was.
It wasn't even five percent because nobody was going to the doctor.
Right.
Nobody was going to the dentist, nobody was going to, they were, they weren't going anywhere. And she said that, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna see it where it's, you know. But in that information too, I mean, you know, one, one claim was, you know,
Yeah, yeah, I, I get that.
Five hundred thousand dollars, I mean.
I think the biggest hit that we're seeing is three entry center, a half million dollar coming out of our fund. Because they're, they're what at a million with a one point one or something and they're only at five hundred thousand? Around six hundred thousand dollars just through the entry center.
But that's not all the grants you're counting.
No, well, how much are these are, three hundred?
Hmm.
I bet you it's half of it.
Projected for twenty twenty four was a hundred and four thousand. Which was less than what we budgeted this year for.
I have a question, what is, what is, what is the IT salary reimbursement?
Just the way they do the numbers, I think it was um, I don't know, Jim was being paid by
You know, because it's, it's only two entities.
Twenty twenty three must have been split.
Must have been split.
City must have been paying that.
Yeah.
What is the UA asking for that stuff?
John.
Yeah.
What was that on the report?
It wasn't.
Wasn't. They came in and I think they asked for thirty thousand
Yeah.
in one year and then we called that in general. And um, we decided to put it on, uh, added as a budget item, right, so.
And I believe he did get some funding from the city?
I think the city approved last night seventy five hundred.
For what?
The US.
And then Benson County was committed to a certain amount with contingency on a joint powers agreement. I think five thousand. So it won't fall all on, all on us, which is, which is good.
So will we take that off for thirty thousand then?
I don't think so, um.
So if he asks for thirty thousand, and you have two other entities putting into that, that's on, he's gonna get that on top of the thirty thousand?
Potentially. Um, and keeping it in there with
It all was to try to build the key.
Yeah.
Um, I believe they want to purchase any other.
I think so.
Probably.
He said it was super expensive, so they had to get a certain amount, maybe they were on the bottom of the type thing.
Yeah. And then just the, you know, the maintenance of
So basically they come up with this seventeen million versus fourteen. They, they're gonna send out statements and a three percent increase?
Two point seven three.
Possibly ever in the land tax we won't operate.
No, it should be all included in the evaluation.
That's in there.
Increase.
Yeah.
Um, so, um.
So what the mill currently sits at is with that.
Oh, crap.
Yeah. So it won't be above and below.
Well, it's a lot of money, but you don't get, what did you say Jeff, two point seven percent?
Two point seven three.
Yeah.
It's probably not terrible compared to where we learned it taught. I was thinking it was like a bigger jump than that, even when you look at, when you just look at the numbers that people bring in, then you look at the end result and these two minutes. On the hand, probably not. When you just see like people then tax and tax and tax, that's where you get the kickback.
And this budget does not include, correct? I think we discussed that the, I think the ask for the software increases.
Requests.
And the um, audio ADI enhancements to the reading rooms in the facility. And I think, I think if you conservatively did, I think their bid was sixty four thousand. And probably have to add some money for electricians and contingencies for that, Steve, probably.
Probably a hundred thousand.
Well, I, I don't know if they've got, cost thirty thousand for wiring and electrician, but you know, I think it'll be done for five, but and how good was that bid good for, did it say those prices, was it thirty days or?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
Prices are valid for fifteen days and may be locked in by signing this retail sales agreement.
It's from July twenty eighth.
Yeah.
It's right now, right?
Getting pretty close to it.
And what does that do for us, Steve, as far as this though?
I guess that would make this room basically a hundred percent able to meaning wise, set up microphones and speakers. Plugging different devices so you can see every, whoever's talking or someone on teams or and people could individ- their voice is better or you can see the audience. Or people watching can see whoever's talking in the audience.
Similar setup over in the city?
I'm not sure what exactly they.
I think it'd be, I think it'd be a little better. Probably quite a bit. Um.
But similar setup.
Yeah. Think a different camera system, correct Stephen?
Yeah, yeah.
You know, launching the TV is different. Um, maybe adding um, microphones, so, and then maybe a podium over on that side or so, and then with the camera being able to focus on whoever's addressing the commission, because usually the audience watching on YouTube is getting the back of that person's head if at all, you know, because sometimes if they're sitting over there or standing over there, the camera's not picking up anything and maybe their sound, maybe their voice, but you can't see who's talking. So, and that's something as a commission we can address and, and make sure that our audiences and if they're gonna address the commission that they come forward and, you know, and, right? So camera can pick them up, the microphones can pick them up, different things like that, so it's a
We have one that just.
Right. So.
I was telling Jeff, I was up to a meeting in Can Do for Mountain Lakes and their commission room is updated like that. It's, it's amazing, I could hear some things they can hear and then people were coming in that were on um, the team side of it, it was, it was some crazy how good it was.
And then I think there was uh, a unit on the, on a cart for downstairs so you could set it up in the, in the big meeting room or you could wheel it over to the historical room and utilize it in both areas and um. I think that was included in the price as well, correct?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Is that the argument too?
Right, it could it could be wheeled anywhere, I guess, as long as it fits on the elevator, but it's I don't know if possibly we could rehab the armory to work, make it work, the current equipment be used for for a team's meeting or something, get that up on maintenance and let it might be able to be used somewhat there.
Cause hardly anyone does Ivan over there anymore, do you?
It's been years, so.
That's what I'm saying.
But if, yeah, if it were up to date, the state said it would work for team's meetings. So it just needs to be caught up on maintenance. Since it hasn't been working, we didn't pay any of the maintenance they wanna get new, so don't need to pay for it.
And some of this stuff can be paid for with our COVID dollars? Um, is there two hundred thousand left in that?
COVID account.
The No, the, the two million that's ARPA, well, ARPA COVID.
The COVID, the COVID money was free and clear. The ARPA money is federal with recordings and
Strings.
Yeah.
And of that ARPA money we out, is it two hundred thousand? That was set aside for coming or was it two fifty? Um, yeah, hey? And then I think Lisa had said that we could utilize some of our savings for some of this. So those big software projects, you know, instead of a three year deal.
Pay for it.
Pay for it, get it going, get it started. Um, and that way you don't have to wait till twenty twenty four to sign off it and, and you could utilize that.
Is two thousand nine or two thousand twenty two fucking that's it, that's what we're paying them?
That million dollars of that is for twenty twenty two.
Right.
You didn't get any money back for that at all, to me.
But we still have to budget for until it's spent and closed.
Oh, I'm correct, and the money that we got, very realistic for this one, like four two six. Not all that can be a federal, some of it is.
Those, those are FEMA.
Yeah.
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 That's, that's what I'm saying, so when we put this, my question is, is when we put this one point four two six five hundred into this figure and that drives this two point seven three, right? But how much of that money did we get from the feds? None of it? Or that just aren't portioned? You see what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Because let's say, let's say you got one and a half million, if you got a million from the feds, are we budgeting for a million or are we budgeting for five hundred?
But you have to
A map?
You have to budget.
You gotta spend it.
You have to, yes.
Reimbursement thing. So then you would get it onto the, you would get the money back to that.
So, that one.
Well, I think it's
You gotta have money to get money.
I think it's a seventy five percent.
I know it's not a hundred percent. It's still a seventy five percent, that's what you got. I'm just trying to get around the axle.
Your life.
What is this?
Your life's dream.
Because it's, because the twenty twenty two was a million of this. Because we have that, forty probably, right? Twenty twenty two.
Right.
I'm trying to, yeah.
But maybe what
I see what you mean, like you gotta put it in the budget because if
Yeah.
if it can work to get that money, you gotta have.
Right.
Because this four twenty six five hundred of that basically is for the other years and they're always behind. of that basically is for the other years and they're always behind. You know, Kevin's always behind.
Always behind. But see, like, I think like nine, ten. Not sure about eleven, maybe eleven. You know, those probably could be closed out. I'd have to double check with Kevin.
I mean, that's something because if we're looking, if you close them out, we're looking at three hundred four, we're
Right.
Three, three fifty off the top of the one point four. I mean, we're looking for something to make this big number come last.
Right.
Those are closed out. Now that brings it down to one point one million, that's a million one hundred and one point four.
But those
So shouldn't have this already been budgeted in the last year? If this was already, then my question is, if this four hundred and twenty six dollars and five hundred was budgeted last year, shouldn't we only be budgeting for a million?
Okay, so the figures on here. Try to like, try to explain it. Okay. So the figures on here are what is budgeted.
Yep.
Okay? The, the, to come up with the mils.
I'm tracking.
That's not figured into here.
Correct.
Does that make sense? Like it's hard to like
No, I understand.
It's hard to like the two point seven three increase is your increase based off of mils. Where that is just actual dollars, there are no mils for them. So even though he put a million dollars, doesn't mean, doesn't mean that we're
We're not using more mils on that side.
It doesn't mean that we're giving a million dollars.
Yeah.
Like he put a million dollars in thinking that that's
So that's where the airport and the, and the library, that's mils.
Yes.
That's what we were saying, that mil change.
Yes. So there's, there's ones that have nothing to do with mils and then there are ones
That do.
that do.
Right.
And like this list, you know, like this that I gave you, like this would be how you figure
So you take that zero increased calculation in teams and you look at that, it's, you know, a hundred and thirteen point seven three mils is the proposed no levy that we're gonna levy for taxpayers. Each mill valued at seventy two thousand three oh eight. And, you know, you multiply those numbers, you can multiply that eight million, two, two, three, six, seventy two. That's that's what we're actually asking the taxpayers for. And not to, not what we're spending or budgeting. I mean, but what we'll be needing from taxpayers for revenue.
And that's not just gone, that's everybody that bought school or that just just coming
This is just, this is just
Just coming
This, this hundred and thirteen point seven three mils is just what the county is going to put.
So that's why when the tax office over there, people get their statements and they come in and they're like, holy crap, you're up, my tax is ten percent. And she has to explain to them, well, this is where it is gonna break it down. I can't just say it's on the county because it's not the county. There's a lot of people that don't look at it, they're just looking at the bottom figure.
Yeah, but it does show on the tax statement.
But they're just looking at the, the end number.
Where, yeah, yeah. Um
So you know, like our portion would be two seven three, it's not to say that schools not do two five seven three.
You know.
But I'm just saying, you, I'm just guessing. It doesn't mean that they couldn't.
Right, and with um with that information um about the townships, the, the hospital, um but the North Dakota Township Officers Association sent out an email to all the townships stating that, you know, moving forward in order to qualify for more state funding, that you have to be at eighteen mils. So out of our thirty
Six.
Six, yeah, that was like um, eight. Eight of those, um, I wrote down on a piece of paper. So out of the eight, two had already had it in their budget, two up theirs to eighteen mils. And I have made contact with the others. Um, two people, two townships are gonna have a township hearing. Um current township is one, they were at seventeen. They have to have a public hearing, two up at one mil. Um, the other one is Overland Township. I don't know that they're, because they're at like um nine, six something, six something right now, six or nine. Yeah, because they only go by a dollar amount. So they're going to, they're not gonna go up to the full eighteen, but they're probably gonna go to a halfway point. And then next year go the rest of the way. So, you know
So what's the, what are the max mils like when you look at?
That is hmm, set by the state.
So, but what I'm saying to you that you're coming, I think like uh your, your road program's ten mils, so if he max, that is a million then. Or you got the library is saying four mils and the airport's saying four mils, so they max that?
Yep. That's max.
Yep. So when next year when they come in and they need more money, they're gonna have to figure it out because that's max. That, that's what I'm looking at is I'm looking at some of these people that are getting to the max.
So this is like
Are we gonna be in trouble? I mean, you know more about it than Ivan, Jeff. Who's gonna be, who's gonna be in trouble? Is the airports and the library gonna be?
They'll just stop to budget within.
Yeah, um, and, and airport hasn't been
I know the airport did it once before, they were there and then they went down and then it lost.
Yeah. They, they're squirreling away O and M money, so they have that, you know, because obviously, you know, they're thinking with a bigger facility is gonna take bigger, more money to operate and so they're able to take some of their money that they receive from the federal government, set that aside for O and M. And so be able to use, utilize that.
I know you had to explain why.
And so
You know, and you look at, if you look at the library, they're gonna be at four mils and then they get their, let's say they get their stuff fixed over there. Would they be able to go back down to three mils again? You know, that's
Yeah.
So if you look, if you look, I see that. So it would say in
Because most of the time when you hit the max mils, it's because they're trying to repair something.
I think it has to go under voter.
And then you know
Have to be approved by voters.
Let's say they're at four mils, different and all, say they do whatever with your project, you can't really have that no more in that project issue, probably be able to go back the other way. So you went like big section one.
Oh, I know that one.
Yeah, when I was still there. Because you lose that vote, you lose Yeah. But we had to vote to get the board.
Yep.
And because Brendan and I were there, we were getting close, that's why we looked at that. But now they're only using a portion of that, that's, that's why it's to a two map or something.
But I, and I think they, the county voters approved staying with that
Yeah.
for the next ten years, so
Yeah, and the, and the um the county road program.
Yeah.
Like they could, they could go up to
Yep, no matter. You could use up to
Twenty, right? Yes.
One two.
Yes. I should change that to because that was voted upon last year.
Right. It was easier.
Yep. That they could do an additional ten mils.
Is that something that needs to be done like every time for like three years, five years or something?
Um, I think, I think they changed the wording now so that it doesn't have to come back around like every you know, I think it was every ten.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's something.
It was ten, yeah, yes.
I know when they voted extension, yeah.
Yeah.
Every ten.
So now you just, you know, you don't put a time cap on there, you just put, you know, that it's a possibility to, that you could go up to. You know, not saying that you're gonna, you know, get to that point, but in this budget hearing, it's, it's just to give people a dollar figure.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't necessarily mean that they're paying for the seventeen million dollars.
Correct.
But there's that.
That's why it's preliminary. How many kind of do you see the preliminary go the other way?
Down.
The after the fact.
Um, yes. What's happened?
I mean, you've been here for thirty years, you've never seen it.
And Kevin is usually the one who will re-figure his budget.
Oh, yeah.
Because was it a couple years ago, like we were at like almost seven percent? Like four, yeah. Seven or nine, I don't know, I think it was seven. And so he, he went back and he re, like he refigured. And said, oh, you know, well, this we could put off. You know, kind of, you know, draw a line, do this half, this half, and I think we got it down to
He's the biggest one, I mean.
Mm-hmm.
Four, three, four?
No.
Yeah.
A big deal.
Yeah, you know.
Gets a lot of state and federal weight.
Yep.
So you could never do it on that. No.
But people made comments that, you know, we, you know, that we do a great job with our, I mean, our roads are way better situation than some other counties.
Well, for the situations that we've had since ninety three. I mean, if you look at overall what it's happened.
Yep.
We could be really weak off.
So any ideas, recommendations? Um Pictometry, Tyler Technologies, the auditing, taxing, payroll, all that kind of stuff.
Pictometry is
Pictometry is the Eagle Vision um, and stuff that, working with Steve and presentation that we got works with the Vanguard um software. Vanguard will be updating as well. Um, I think between the
So of that hundred and seventy two thousand, the twenty five thousand five sixty is just for the Devil's Lake City. Um, and they have like reached out and said that if we are going to go forward with this, that they will just write the check to us instead of Eagle Bay. So we're only at hundred and forty six stuff.
Would they only want to give us twenty five thousand?
That's, that's on this quote, that's their portion. Right?
Just, just land area of the
Yep.
The
I don't remember how many miles he said it was, like
Seventy one, I guess.
Yeah, seventy one. And we have like one thousand two hundred and forty nine. Uh, if you go to like page nineteen and then go to those back pages. Right, you've got the Tyler, Tyler piece. I think he's headed up on the screen too.
This is included in the budget?
Do that.
This is included?
That's part of the request.
Right.
And, and what's things?
I thought the city was willing to do really seeing, I think the city would be willing to if we were willing to go with the whole picture. I was saying the same thing. I thought he said they would do half of it, one more, but it's very
What's that law? That's right.
That's right.
Well, they must have only decided to get their portion.
Or, or is that the enhancement? Because didn't they want the, the better quality than always
Where they went, they did the major
They did.
Yeah, it's three inch.
Yeah, this is, the three inch is three hundred and sixty dollars a square mile. And the six inch is hundred and twenty.
So the, the county would be doing the one, the city
The six inch over the whole county, the city area. Other than that, it's eight thousand. But since they got the, them on the three inch. And they did take the whole extraterritorial and more. And they go way up to the dump here. Other things, so so they, they've got more area than they paying, paying for them.
I like paying, that's what it sounds like, they take down the actual, that two mile. I guess you're on down if they want to get done because they want to know.
If they just did the city limits, it would be the minus.
In order to get the budget. At the six inch or? Well, I mean, it's all. As presented. How do they do?
It's not part of. But.
I technically, should it be? You made a.
Should take more.
Take the same.
A little more.
Yeah. Spend. Sure, they had a hundred and seventeen, hundred and twenty-five million. Hundred thirteen mils.
I would say you like.
Oh, yeah.
Two separate.
Go ahead and see what your minus was on. Yeah.
From the preliminary. And the.
Yeah.
Everything, and then do the software.
There.
Kind of using two separate parts.
Alright. I guess I should ask that night, what they would think, you know, you do this hundred and seventy-two thousand.
Mm-hmm.
What they think would be projected from over after day? Would it create more records? Obviously, there's things built or that. But not after, you know, they have.
Oh, sure, well.
No, but I was curious of what it did for. Well, somebody's already done. Someone that's already done it, what did, what kind of.
Did it pay for it?
Yeah. You know, I thought about that after the fact, like a couple of weeks later, I was gonna ask that tonight.
I think one of the, the, it would be an additional tool in her toolbox that it'll give her the opportunity of having a potentially accurate measurement of a building and without actually going out there and.
I understood that part of that, like, once they did this. So what's.
What did that include that?
I think it did.
Well, that would.
Well, it's a different company than that.
It's all included.
Oh, the Vanguard?
Yeah, Vanguard, that was included in that, I, I don't know what.
Vanguard was a hundred and forty thousand.
Okay, so that's on top of the.
One seventy-two.
They're two different, yeah, but yet they'll.
Oh, it was. There was three pieces to that.
Yeah.
Diagonal ones. I don't remember which page it was on, but it had been written in there. So. Like here somewhere? I wonder if that asked that question. What kind of? I know it's gonna be way better tool, the toolbox, and I totally understood that. But, but say you're at five million tax base. How much other than that? Because if, if you're looking at it, it'll bring the face up because you have a whole bunch of inaccurate records. You know? Imagine there's some out there, guaranteed. Well, that's what the. Then the lines is like three years. Yeah. Or I'm gonna update. To get everybody to ground zero. Right. I mean, now they put the Vanguard. If we didn't do this, the Vanguard wasn't gonna be that accurate. Right. The, the pictorial thing was a big thing on the top. That's why you understood it too. It was gonna be a much better tool, toolbox. Because the pictures, measurements are right there.
Because the Vanguard portion of it wasn't that too like to, like to do the whole county.
And then.
Like reevaluate the whole county.
The thing, like she said, the only, only time she would have to go out and measure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
If this time was new.
Real evolved with there, every person.
Or if someone would appeal and said, well, we don't agree with that, that, you know, and she will physically say, okay, I remember that.
There'll be.
Oh, absolutely. It's tough to deal with seven thousand, five thousand people.
So the recommendation from Candy would be to approve the preliminary budget and then do the software and the ABI as a separate expenditure, because they're kind of two different pots of money. Um, set, and set the public hearing date for the preliminary budget.
And I put it at the September nineteenth meeting at five forty-five. Or we can change it to six o'clock to give those people.
An extra.
Yep.
Few minutes to get here.
You said September nineteenth.
September nineteenth, yep.
September nineteenth.
Because your final budget has to be approved by the first meeting in October. So maybe, maybe we should do something, because I'm gonna have Kevin.
So we'd need that in the form of a motion to approve the preliminary budget as presented and set the budget hearing for September nineteenth at six P M. But that is in agreement with everybody. If not, uh, go ahead and make another suggestion. But, you know, I, yeah. True, and we've got to start somewhere and, and this has been a process where we've been leading up to for the last two months now.
I guess I'll make a motion to accept the preliminary budget.
Yeah, that's why I'm saying same thing.
With the additions or? Want me to do that somewhere?
Yeah, yeah. And just set the preliminary budget hearing from the nineteenth.
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
At six?
Six o'clock, yeah. Because we usually, usually what you do is we put that last on the agenda and then we do everything so that we have someone from the public to.
Do you comment?
Mm-hmm. Yep. So, and we have a second. So we have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the preliminary budget. And set a hearing date for September nineteenth at six P M. And the county courthouse commissioner. Further discussion? If not, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Preliminary budget is approved.
So these other two items, do we wait until our next regular meeting to? Oh, there's three items there. The Vanguard for hundred and forty thousand, the preliminary for hundred and seventy-two, two seventy-five, and then Tyler Tech. Which we're gonna talk about against two eighty. And the ABI.
And the audio visual.
Thirty, sixty.
Sixty-four thousand.
Am I?
The audio visual, that's how I know, like, or his email information.
You got it. She just added, you know.
Yep.
Yeah. So.
Um, the Tyler technology, um, I got a phone call from, from Carrie today. Um, asking where, like, the decision had been made. Um, she said that we have a special meeting today. I don't know anything would be decided upon today, but, um, as of today, where it sits that we wouldn't go live until, um, July of twenty twenty-four. And they're taking into consideration next year for election. Um, she said because the, if, if it gets close to, um, like the October first, then it won't be until January one of twenty twenty-five.
I would imagine there's a lot of counties, they're all there giving you.
Um. There are twelve ahead of us right now and there are twelve
Remaining?
That she is waiting to hear back and we are one of the larger counties.
Well, I don't think there's any argument that we're gonna go ahead with it, it's just a matter of how we're gonna pay for it.
Correct.
So, um, and I don't know if that's something that we can decide at this meeting without it being on the agenda.
Right. And, I mean, we need it in next week, so it.
So. We'll, we'll meet, meet in a week and we can.
We can actually.
What was that called again? Tyler Technologies.
Tyler Technology.
And what do they want for that?
Two seventy-five.
Two seventy-five?
Two eighty.
Two eighty.
We really don't have a choice.
But we haven't, we haven't went through.
The individual models.
Like, just gotten right into the gut of it all and do we need that?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if we'll even use that, you know, we haven't. This, this covers.
Everything.
Everything.
So it could be less.
Right.
But, but it is, but it is something that is, uh, and required, I mean.
Could be less. Yeah, it's.
Our, our software program is going away and we need to we need to change. And.
The only thing that saddens me with that is the like you could email Kelly, that's currently who we have, I mean, you email him and within, I mean, some, sometimes I don't even know if the email was like completely finished sending and he send like five back to your month, like, whoa, 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 like, slow down here. You know? But we could add, I could get all of those, um, copies of the agreement and everything.
Yeah.
For next meeting.
Steve, do you think you could ask Mr. Butts from ABI to hold that quote for a week? My final answer on next Tuesday?
Yeah. Yeah, do that.
Okay. Um, and see if we wanna go with all what they're recommending or just one room or all the rooms. So. So I think there's a, a few things that we can whittle away yet, but they're not gonna make big significant wholesale changes to the budget, but the preliminary is approved and we'll get everything else moving. And but that is, anybody else have any thing to discuss? Okay, okay. I wanna thank Candy and the staff for putting together the budgets and it's a lot of work. So I really wanna thank our employees at the county and Candy and all her hard work and everybody else that lent, lent a hand in it.
We're making work.
Late nights, early mornings, weekends. Um.
What were these for? For next meeting?
Yep.
This is for next meeting.
Yeah, it's the L E C, yeah.
So.
Additional.
Meeting adjourned.
I'm gonna try. I'm gonna have, because.
Now, that was official.